All right, we call to order the Planning Commission meeting of Thursday, October 17. Establish a quorum, and we have Commissioner Merrick who's out today. Everyone else is here. Any public comments for items not on the agenda? I don't have any speaker cards. Okay, so we'll close that and move to... So the study session, which is item number one, and item number three on the consent calendar have both been continued to November 7.
That's correct.
And I would like to make a motion that we hear item number five before we address item number four.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay, so that passes unanimously.
Make a motion to continue those two items as requested by staff? Item number... or was that part of your motion?
Well, item number one says it was continued, but item number three needs as a request, so...
That's correct.
I move that we positively respond to the request to continue to the November 7 meeting, item three.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So that passes unanimously as well. And we'll move then to the consent calendar and the Planning Commission minutes from October 3.
I move that we approve the minutes of the regular meeting of October 3. Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That passes unanimously as well. We're gonna roll. So we'll move to item number five, Planning Process Amendments.
Thank you very much, Chairman Simek. Members of the Planning Commission, we have before this evening a draft ordinance that seeks to amend several sections of our municipal code. Specifically, they are chapters 14.78, which relates to design review variances and transportation review, and chapter 14.80, which relates to use permits. The changes under 1478 include a change that would allow the Planning Commission to review projects that are additions to existing structures that are greater than 500 square feet, but less than 50% of the existing square footage of the structure, and no increase in the height of the structure. Projects that are less than 500 square feet still receive or are subject to staff administrative review. And those that fall outside of that, those parameters I just described, are subject to city council review. It also includes a change to the meeting notification to increase the radius that we mail notices to property owners and business owners from 500 feet to 1,000 square feet... excuse me, not square feet, but 1,000 feet for design review applications and variance applications. And this is in compliance with the recently adopted change to the open government policy rules adopted by the city council. The ordinance clarifies the requirements for a study session. A project that requires a design review by the city council would require to be required to have a study session in front of the Planning Commission. Study sessions for projects that only need Planning Commission or administrative approval are at the decision request of the applicants. As I mentioned, variances, there's been a change to the notification for variance applications from 500 feet to 1,000 square feet for notification. And then it also clarifies that projects that need city council approval for design review also need to have their projects reviewed by the Complete Streets Commission for review of potential impacts to pedestrian circulation and bicycle patterns in the vicinity of the site. And then with respect to changes to chapter 1478... or excuse me, 1480. That is the requirements for use permits. Clearly, the notification change there has been clarified to make it notice that the mailing radius is 500 feet for those types of applications. Then it also includes some language cleanup for various antiquated terms. I think "planning manager" or something is still referred to in the code, and "Planning and Transportation Commission" is still referred to in the code. And it cleans that language up to make sure that it's clear that it's the Planning Commission that considers those applications. That concludes staff's presentation. We're available to answer any questions that the commission has.
I don't have any questions at this time. Thank you.
Yes, a couple questions for clarification. So on attachment A, page four of the proposed ordinance, in the variance section, it... paragraph A says a property located in any district except for those located in an R1 or R3.3 to 4.5. And I assume that's because, obviously, DRC sees that, sees those. But is it, since you're doing cleanup, is it stated somewhere explicitly that DRC sees those? Because it's not in...
In the Design Review Regulations for Single Family Homes, it's part of that pack of rules.
Okay, so it's there.
It is there. And it's a little... you know, I was kind of going back through this ordinance, and there's always opportunities for cleanup, but it's a little unusual to me that we have a code that has use permits and variances all under one chapter. It seems like they should be maybe separated out into their own distinct chapters, but we won't kind of tackle that monster right now. We'll just try and keep it at the straightforward level.
Okay. And then on that same page, but in paragraph B, number two, we're removing the part about the Planning Commission reviewing variance applications, because I guess all variance applications that are subject to city council design reviews, they'll be looking at the variance application. But does that actually mean that Planning Commission won't even see it and make a recommendation?
Oh, no, you'll still make a recommendation on that application.
Okay. And is that, that's clear elsewhere as well, or...
I believe that it is. I don't see the language off the top of my head that clarifies that, so it might be worthwhile leaving the last sentence of 1478-070 be two in place rather than deleting it.
Right. So saying the Planning Commission shall review?
Right.
Yeah, okay. Okay, that's my clarification. Questions?
I had a question. If staff had actually looked into when you go from a 500 linear radius to a 1,000 radius, what the additional burden on the city is for notification in terms of number of properties in a standard application?
It's quite significant, because we've actually been experiencing that, because we, as soon as the council adopted that policy, even though it's not codified, we've been implementing it. And I think I heard numbers that it's...
Four times?
Yeah, three, two to three times the number of applicants that we are... property owners that we are sending a notification to. It's, I think, about three to four times. Three to four times.
Thank you.
Following up on that, I was trying to understand why that number was picked as opposed to, like, 750. And is there any neighboring town that, like, comes close to us in doing that level of notification? And then the third related question is, is that going to change what we require our commissioners to recuse themselves if 1,000 is now the notification? I mean, I think the law is 500, so I was trying to understand how they pulled that number out.
Speaking to the second part of your question, if you were going to...
Microphone.
There you go.
Speaking to the second part of your question regarding the recusals, the standards are set by state law. And so if you were going to do that, it would have to be through some kind of local ethics resolution or something like that. And without that, then it would just be the standard state law requirements. So it wouldn't change it.
And I don't know the exact reason for the 1,000 feet versus 750 or some other number, but I know that there was an intent to see that more citizens in Los Altos and business owners in Los Altos be notified of projects that are coming through the process in the system.
Have we had significant complaints about people saying they were not notified and they were "close to the project"? Close as in air quotes?
Not that I'm aware of at this staff level, no. I mean, we've, you know, in my entire career, we will always hear people that's claimed that they did not get a notice. And we do keep records of the notices that are sent out, so we're able to verify and show, indeed, they were sent notices. So it's no difference here than I've experienced in other jurisdictions.
Any questions?
I've got one. It's a little nitpicky, but I want to make sure that perhaps it's, that it's at least been considered, because we could end up with some unintended consequences.
Page two.
For Planning Commission Design Review, it says it does not increase the existing height of the building. And so if someone's going to... and again, like, it's just an asphalt shingled roof, and they go to a Spanish tile, and you're increasing the height by... I'm just being really, you know, taking it to the next level, but that's an extra inch or two. Are we going to then trigger this? And do we need some kind of qualifier?
I would say no, that that's an architectural feature and something that the Planning Commission would be taking into their consideration as part of the design review application. I agree with you. It, you know, minimally increases the height of the building, but I think that height increase is de minimis compared to the overall height of the structure.
Okay, so you're comfortable with?
I am, yes.
That's all I had. So with that...
Is anyone here to... No, 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 no. Is there anyone here to speak on this?
Yes, we're gonna move to public...
Oh, move. I thought you were looking for a motion.
We're gonna move to public comments on this item.
Like, I'm not done.
I don't have any as of this moment. Okay, so we'll close public comment and move to a discussion. Do you want to start?
I can start, sure. Back to the ordinance, attachment A. This wasn't a question for clarification, so I'll just... this is probably... Page six, attachment A, at the very top, section five, amendment of code. This is probably just one of those search and replace things, but we actually need to keep the words "Planning and Transportation Commission" in that sentence, because you're saying that you're going to replace all references to that with "Planning Commission." So... but with that housekeeping correction and the questions that we've asked you, I think all this makes sense, and I would support it as drafted.
Yes, I fully support all of the amendments that are put forth in this draft. And I don't really have any exceptions to what's stated here. Thank you.
Yeah, I would recommend approval of the proposed amendments as well.
I don't think these are great ideas, particularly the notification. It just feels really heavy-handed. And it seems like fixing a problem that doesn't exist by creating a lot of... a lot more work. So when I read it, it's, you know, making a recommendation that we think this is in the best interest of the public and the city. And I just don't feel that way. I understand it's the direction provided by city council, but I just disagree with it. So I'm not supportive.
I couldn't agree with you more. I think that this has created more work for staff unnecessarily. I believe that 500 square feet, which is the state law, sufficiently notifies everyone, and I can't support this. I think staff did what they were instructed to do, and they did a very good job doing it. But in terms of recommending it, I think it's everything with the exception of that I can support. But that increase to 1,000 square feet is nutty.
It also seems just arbitrary. Like, if you want more notice, start with 750. And then if you feel like maybe you're not... people aren't hearing it, which is not something that we often hear. We actually regularly hear people saying, "I didn't get it." And they are within 500 feet. And odds are, I don't know if you've seen these, they come as postcards, it looks like junk mail, and people are reading their mail less and less because they're not looking at paper anymore. So it just seems like an effort that I wouldn't support.
I don't think this was going to be... I should have gone first. I... I mean, I completely agree with what you guys are saying. It does seem that it's a direction that city council's going in and has already gone in, and we're just trying to codify it at this point. But if this is a body that's supposed to be making recommendations that we think are in the best interest of the city, then I would agree with you. And I think if the... I mean, the state is already... the state mandate is 500 feet. Is that a state mandate?
Yes, that's in the planning code.
Yeah.
Do we know if any town, any town, does what they're recommending?
Not off the top of my head.
So just for clarification, so you're saying we separated the recusal issue, and we confirmed that's 500 feet per state. You're saying that also the notification is 500 feet per state?
Right.
And they're not connected?
Right. The noticing requirements that are in the planning code, in the government code, provide for 500 feet.
I remember times when it was 100 feet, and then cities adopted, you know, kind of an internal policy of 300 feet, and state kind of caught up to 300 feet, and then they went to 500 feet. Now states got up to 500 feet. So it does jump, has been growing incrementally over the last 29 years.
Just one comment. I don't know if this would complicate things, but is it possible that maybe certain projects or certain types of projects or certain locations would trigger the 1,000? And that could be a recommendation? I don't know. I'm just trying to see if there's maybe a compromise.
You could develop something like that. I'm just thinking of the implementation of something like that. I think it'd be kind of... it would be more difficult to track those than just saying it's a flat 1,000 or 500 feet radius.
Yeah, so we're just a recommending body, right? And city council always has the right as the elected officials to make their own determination. But I would say, at least from my perspective, I would agree with the two of you that we should be following what the state's doing on this.
So since we're discussing this, I'm actually... I can agree with that. I mean, just to clarify, are we all in agreement with all the rest of the points? So that's really the only, the only thing?
Seems to be the only...
Okay, all right. I could go with that.
So we could make a recommendation to city council to approve this ordinance with the one exception that we would not recommend going to 1,000 feet, even though it's already policy, even though you've already been doing it. But we feel like it's an important thing to say. We could do that, and then we could move on as an issue.
Yes, you could.
Okay. We have a fairly heavy agenda coming up on the next item. I move that we recommend approval of these changes to our zoning code with the exception of the 1,000 square foot increase in radius for noticing. And we would recommend to city council that they go back to the state mandate of 500 feet.
Second? Anyone?
What's that?
I need a second.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? That's unanimous as well.
Thank you all.
And we'll move to item number four.
So I will recuse myself, since I have an interest in a property within 500 and 1,000 feet of this property.
Good night.
Thank you. And I don't, with respect to the last agenda item, I don't have anything additional to add
Good evening, commissioners. I'm Steve Golden, senior planner. The item before you is the project at 99 Fremont Avenue, which is a design review, use permit, and tenant map for a new two-story mixed-use building with 100... sorry, 1,500 square feet of commercial on the first floor and three condominium units on the second floor. This item was continued from the September 19 meeting. And at that meeting, the commission jointly expressed concern about the pedestrian visibility and the massing of the corners around the building. You also expressed a concern about the design of the Miramonte elevation at the first story, flanking the right side of the garage. And lastly, the commission was concerned about the impacts of the project to the surrounding properties and the public right of way. So following your discussion, the commission did vote 4-0 to continue the item to tonight's meeting. You did give direction to the applicant to consider trimming the corners of the building where it meets the property lines at Fremont Avenue at A Street and also Fremont Avenue and Miramonte Avenue to reduce the massing and improve the visibility. You directed the applicant to provide either more articulation or human-scale features at the pedestrian level on the Miramonte elevation. And you instructed the applicant to submit a construction management plan. So in response to that, the applicant has revised the project design and provided supporting materials to address your concerns. This was all described in the staff report provided to you. I won't go in a lot of detail as the applicant is here, as well as their architect, so they'll... they can give you a more detailed architectural response to your concerns. I just wanted to also let you know there was a number of materials that did come after the publication of the agenda report. This included an alternative design, which trimmed both corners of the building. So the plan with the agenda report trimmed the corner on the Fremont and A Street intersection or corner. And the alternative plan additionally trimmed the building on the Fremont-Miramonte corner. There were also a number of correspondences that came in after the publication of the agenda. There was 13 correspondences, and as well as responses from the applicant's attorney as well as the city's attorney. With regards to the design that the applicant provided, because it was kind of submitted late, we didn't have really an opportunity to comment in the staff report. But on the screen in front of you is the alternative design, which clips, again, that Fremont-Miramonte elevation or the corner. Just maybe one of the concerns as far as staff would like to point out is the clipping of this corner, the exterior material, is that stone, which has a more heavy appearance to it. And it's on that projecting part of the building. So it appears a little bit out of place because it's a heavy material not supported by anything under it. Whereas when it was rounded, you had the full wall to give that visual appearance of a supporting structure. But in this case, the architect may have thought about that exterior material a little bit more closely to change it to be more suitable for that detail. But with that, I do have all of the plans that were submitted, if you wanted to look at those in more detail or if you have questions about those. And the city attorney is here. If you have any questions about the letters and memos back and forth, and I'd be happy to answer any questions for you that you might have at this time.
So the 10-10 dated plans are the ones that show both corners clipped, and we have only some of the set, because I'm assuming the rest of the drawings did not change significantly.
That would be our understanding. They provide an abbreviated set just to show you those features that did change.
Thank you.
Regarding the exchange of letters that went back and forth on the housing accountability, the one item that wasn't addressed, and therefore I assume it's not relevant, but I'm going to ask just so it's explicit. So it does not require an affordable housing unit to potentially apply the Housing Accountability Act?
No, it doesn't. There's... the Housing Accountability Act applies to housing development projects, so it doesn't require that. Although, as I've outlined in the initial letter and the subsequent memo that I provided, I don't believe that this fits the definition...
Right, for those other reasons. But I just wanted to explicitly say that the absence of affordable housing in no way influences whether the Housing Accountability Act does or doesn't apply.
Correct.
Correct. Okay, thank you.
The opening on the garage side... there's an opening, sorry, on A dot 10, A10. When you see the garage door, to the right of that, there's that opening. So is it basically, it's just a kind of an opening that someone can just walk behind the garage door? Or is it protected by something?
Looked like it was opened in the plant.
Yeah.
By the trash, in front of the trash enclosure.
In front... okay.
Yeah, it looks like it's just in front of that trash, the trash room of the building. But it's not clear how... if there's a wall that kind of closes that from the interior of the garage?
Yeah, that's what I was wondering. Okay.
The architect is here and could probably answer that for you.
Any other questions?
I have some question for the architect, but I'll wait till...
I've got one. So we've approved mechanical lift systems many times, you know, several times prior to this. But as far as I can remember, they're in a subterranean condition. Have we approved a lift system at grade?
For the 389, 385, 389 First Street project, that particular lift system, you entered it at grade, and it was a pit. So similar. I think there's, seems to be all different flavors of these lift systems. So it just depends on what type of lift system design can probably fit in the space and appropriately park the cars.
Okay. But this is all at grade? Is that right?
This particular one?
No, I think...
Or is it going down one level?
I think this will go down into a pit area that is below the level of the parking surface as you come in off of the street.
The full set of plans here. Yeah, so here's a section. This, sorry, this is A 13 of the set that was submitted for the September 19, the full set.
We don't have that. But we do have it here. On A 3.
And do you know if that's on, is it, is there a backup power generator to the lift system?
As I'm becoming more aware of how these lift systems are operated and installed, I believe they'll have some sort of backup generator. The architect may be able to answer that more specifically with the specifications.
Okay. And it meets the parking requirements of whatever nine feet wide?
Space size.
Space size?
Stall size.
I believe it does. Sorry, I was not the original project planner on this.
Right.
We can come back to that.
Yeah, it wasn't called out as an exception.
Right. That's why I just wanted to make sure that was...
Yeah, so it would have been at the, providing that eight-and-a-half-foot width to the parking space.
Okay. Those are all my questions. Anyone else? Okay. So with that, we will move to a 10-minute, up to 10-minute presentation.
From the applicant? If you'd like.
Good evening, Commissioners. Greg Bunker, here to speak about our project at 999 Fremont Avenue. We've worked very hard over the last six years and have listened to what the Commission has requested during that period of time. We have enlisted maybe a half a dozen architects to collaborate on the plan that you have before you. We have, in our last reiteration, you had requested that we bring in the corners, which we have done. You can obviously approve our initial, we give you a choice. You can approve it as we designed at our last hearing, or you can approve the notching of the corners as requested. I just wanted to point out that something that I recalled today, when I built this building back in 1980, I gave up 4,000 square feet to 2,000 square feet on Fremont and a couple thousand square feet on Miramonte. So I just wanted to point that out. So we are also dedicating some additional land for sidewalks here as well. We're taking the front sidewalk on Fremont from five to eight feet. And that's a great benefit for the community. But we've done a great job. We've worked very hard. We have spent 5,000 man-hours and 3,000 emails and have collaborated extensively over the years to create this beautiful design that we have before you today. I want to mention that I'm really pleased with the work that John Biggs and Steve has done on the project. It's functioned very well. And, you know, there are recommendations for approval this evening. And I wanted to reiterate that now the Planning Director of Los Altos Hills, who recommended approval of this design, Zach Dahl, has, of course, moved over there. So we have now kind of a consensus between the staff of the Planning Commission for City of Los Altos and now the Director of the City of Los Altos Hills are both recommending approval of this project in its present configuration. Just a little point I want to make out. In any event, we're actually overparked on the project by two spaces. We have created substantially over-rerequirements on bicycle storage and parking. So we're not asking for anything today. We have, you know, you had some questions about the, that little area to the right of the garage. And these are all reiterations that have been requested of us over time by the staff and the traffic engineer and so forth. That's just to create the largest line of sight that we can for vehicles exiting the parking structure. And it's quite large now. Now, I'd like to point out that this design is substantially safer than the existing functionality of the property in that we're eliminating a driveway on Fremont Avenue. So we're reducing it from two driveways to one. And the driveway and visibility for this project will be larger and very subtle. So the fact that we're putting mirrors in and some sort of audible to alert pedestrians and so forth make this a much safer project. Now, one of the other items that has been addressed in our information to you is that the traffic engineer has indicated that likely there will be actually less activity to the site from this design. Because let's say, drive-up windows have a lot of popularity, and that generates a lot of us visits to the site. So it'll be safer, it'll have less activity, it'll be much more traffic attractive than the existing project, because you won't be looking at cars. And that's kind of what stands apart for this project is now the cars will be inside, it'll have a much more substantial look, a kind of a financial look. But, you know, over the six years of design changes, we've tried to just complement everything in the neighborhood, which we've done, I believe. And as Phoebe could point out, for six years now, I've been listening and have been dutiful in our changes to the project. However, we feel that we do some consideration to try to get this project moving forward. It's timely, you know, we've made quite a bit of an investment. We feel that, you know, the Housing Accountability Act does in fact suggest that, you know, it should be approved as a matter of right. That's something that Ethan and the other powers that be to decide. But, you know, we need housing in the city, we need housing in the county. And when, you know, Facebook says, Mark Zuckerberg says, you know, "I'm not sure we're going to grow here anymore." That's about as serious as it can get. So we better get some housing in wherever we can. So I'm only asking for three housing units. Really, there's not any substantialness to the retail office component. But it was always asked of us to try to increase that, to try to have a look across Fremont of a promenade of sorts. But we have done a lot of work, you know. Like I said, about 5,000 man-hours, 3,000 emails, six architects, et cetera, et cetera. We've done our work. We feel we're deserving of a recommendation of approval to move on to the City Council. And from the standpoint of safety, visibility, the look, I think will add to the value of all the neighboring commercial properties as well as add to the value of the residential neighborhood. And, you know, just to point out, it's a struggling area out there. I've been doing business there, here in Los Altos, for 45 years. I had a store at the corner of First and Main, if you recall. Been around that long. It was both a drive-up. And, you know, I've operated at this corner, like I said, and around the city as a property owner, as a landlord, and a business owner for 45 years. And I think we need to really step up and allow us to make a substantial investment to this corner. As you know, U.S. Bank is closing. They're suffering. They couldn't, they don't have enough business there. And so we need to kind of stem the tide and effectively allow a substantial investment. And this is a substantial investment on our part, and we've worked very diligently. So with that, maybe the architect can come up and answer your additional questions.
Good evening, Peter Sandholt, FCGA Architecture. I did want to just address the couple of questions that you folks had. In terms of the trash enclosure, yeah, that is an opening to walk around the end of the garage. And as Greg indicated, that was one of the previous comments to widen the view angle of cars going out of the garage. So as you look at it in plan view, sitting in a car, you can look, you know, there's a line of sight through, past the column. And then that's why, Steve, you had a, you had a previous... There you go. No, not that one. Oh, did you not, did you not have that? There was, on sheet A dot 10 on the amended version, there is a perspective, there you go. There's a perspective view of the garage. With the screening, the screening here that's see-through, the garage door that's obviously a roll-up door, and then this piece is open, so that creates a wide view of pedestrians here looking through the screens at the cars coming and going, and of course, cars in the garage having full visibility to the street.
So you're not concerned about the security that you put down this rolling garage door, but literally anybody can walk into the garage?
Yeah, you can walk, you can walk in and out.
But you could have an equivalent screen?
You could have, you could put, we could put a gate in there, like a see-through gate sort of deal?
Without changing...
Without, without changing the visibility at all. If we were... Do that as well? Yeah. If we're, if we are concerned about people just walking into the garage, you know, we can certainly do that. Another question about the, about the car lift system. Yeah, it does go down into a... Okay. It does go down into a pit, and it does go overhead, but it's parked at grade. And so you, so you come into the garage at grade, you go into your, into your unit. And then like the Rubik's Cube, it moves it either up or down or sideways.
Got it. It's a puzzle lift system, not a straight?
Yeah, it's, yes, correct.
Okay. And that equipment sits at the, at grade or below?
Well, it's founded in the basement level. And then it's a stacking rack that fits within the volume of the area. And then it moves the cars around, side to side and up and down.
And there is backup?
And then, yes, there is, there is backup power. And there's, as you'll see in the plan, we have a whole bank of utility rooms that's right adjacent to and behind that parking lift system. So I'm here for any other questions?
Sure. I have a couple of questions.
Yeah, sure.
Respective to the, to the retail customer's journey. So if I were to, do I have access to parking in this, in this area?
Yeah, the part, the retail parking is right behind. There's the two handicap stalls.
Okay.
And then the four or five other stalls that are back there. The at-grade parking in the garage.
Okay. And is it the expectation that as a customer, I would get out of my car and then sort of walk around that aperture that we just talked about along Miramonte Avenue and then into the retail?
Yes, and then into the retail space.
Okay. And respective to the, to the, sort of the journey for the occupants, get out of my car, and do I have direct access to the lift? Or is there, do I need to also sort of walk around to the lobby, front lobby?
No, there's, there's access to the elevator that's to the parking garage.
Okay. So it's direct?
And there's also access to stairway, direct access to stairway up to the unit.
Where is that exactly in the plan? Maybe I'm just not seeing it.
I've got the elevator, but I don't have this, too.
Yeah, oh, I'm sorry. Just, just the elevator. Yeah, you have direct access to the elevator to get up, and then the stairway would be from the lobby out front.
Okay. Right. Okay. And then, can you just illustrate or walk me through, or walk us through the changes that you've made?
Yeah, certainly.
Especially along Miramonte Avenue?
Yes. So the, so the comment that we had on Miramonte, if you, if you recall the previous version, to the right-hand side...
I have so many different versions of that.
Yeah. The previous version from our last meeting.
Okay.
That's A 10?
That's, but it's not the A 10s we have today.
It's the ones from the previous.
The old A 1s.
Yeah. So what we did was we, we took the stone, we took the stone materials and some of the, some of the smaller upper window features and flanked the garage with those materials. And in the previous version...
On the right-hand side?
On the right-hand side, yeah. So in the previous version...
Here's the previous version on screen now.
Yeah, so here's the previous version, where the comment was that we do not like the plaster facade all the way down around the corner. Now, Steve, if you...
I'm going to have to interrupt. I appreciate you going up there. The only issue is that people at home can't hear you, so...
That's why I tried to speak up, sorry.
Yeah. I appreciate it.
So then, now, as you can see, flanking the side, we carried the stone from the corner of Miramonte and Fremont back around to that other side. And we also carried that one upper window element across to kind of stretch that along the Miramonte elevation.
Okay. And then the other two changes are just on the corners?
Then the other two changes, our initial submittal was just clipping the corner of A Street and Fremont.
Okay.
And then with keeping the rounded version on the corner of Miramonte, frankly, I like that version better. But then we had also thought that we would consider cutting that other corner back to address a bigger concern of people coming around the corner. I mean, it is a controlled intersection, but it does give a little more, you know, a little more room on that street-corner sidewalk.
And how do you respond to Planner Golden's question about the floating masonry having cut that corner back?
I'm not sure. I don't have an issue with it, honestly. It's not, I don't think it's that much of a projection. But we could certainly, we can certainly explore a material change for that rounded corner to where we carry the stone from the base column up to the back on both sides. And then a different material can come around on the curved element.
Right. Right. Okay. So from a structural standpoint, you...
Oh, from a structural standpoint, it's a non-issue. Yeah, it's a non-structural issue.
Right. There's one other element, I'm surprised that you didn't talk about it, because I think that is part of your change, is the proposed planters along the...
Actually, that was in the previous version.
What was it?
Yeah, if, if you look through the landscape drawings, that was there previously. It was just not reflected in the building elevations.
Right.
We incorporated that because there was some other comments about, well, what about some other human elements and plantings? And that, that sort of comment. And we reflected that in the building elevations to...
Sure. Do you feel that that response is sort of enough to provide that sort of softness and the human quality along Miramonte?
Yes, we do. I think it's, I think it stretched that building elevation quite nicely.
Can I just follow up to a question? I just, because I had a question around that. Because the elevation as shown on A 10, to me, I don't really understand. And then I look at A 5. The two don't really seem to be... I can't...
Congruent?
There you go.
Unless you're saying that that planner sits outside of what's the balcony and the trash room?
It's, it sits outside, it sits outside of the balcony and then in front of the wall that's set back from the trash room. That's correct.
But you're not going to have any real access, so I can understand maintaining the planter from the balcony. But how is that maintained all the way down that elevation from the, in front of the trash room?
Two feet wide.
Need a really long ladder.
Yeah.
Long hose.
That, that actually could be access, we, we would need to, we would need to put some sort of access on the, on the-
Trash room.
-elevation, access through the trash room.
So you'd be maintaining that planter through the, through the tenancy, then?
Yes.
Okay.
And is there any landscaping along that whole elevation at the ground floor level?
Along Miramonte? No, we were actually directed in previous commissions and at staff level to eliminate any street trees along Miramonte.
I had a quick question. I think at the last meeting, some of the neighbors were talking about the, the noise that the garage door could create. Is the idea that that door would be open during business hours and then-
That is correct.
Okay.
Because, because that's public parking back there.
Yeah.
Other than the lift, that's, that's parking for the retail.
Yeah, so the, the idea would be that that would be open?
The idea that is that that door is open during business hours-
I see.
And then closed at nighttime.
Okay.
I have one question about the construction, the draft construction management plan. There's a red dotted line in the middle of the second page of Attachment D, and that shows potential construction parking areas pending owner's permission, and that's, I assume that's the bank, the U.S. Bank. So have you actually asked them, or you're just putting a red line there and saying, well, we can ask them?
No, I, yeah, I defer that to Greg, but, but that's what we've discussed in the past, was that there's opportunities out there-
Right.
Or the Chase Bank to-
But have you discussed it other than amongst yourself? Have you?
Have you discussed it with them?
So, yes, it's been discussed.
Any other questions?
Just let the commissioner know, there is a condition in the resolution, it's Condition Number 26, which would require the applicant to provide a management plan. So it's something further that we would, as staff, look at and make sure that things haven't changed in the area, or that it satisfies the city's conditions for-
Yeah, that's correct. We're actually conditioned to have an approved management plan.
Okay.
So we, we brought a draft of our thinking per your request the last time.
Right. But that, with the condition that basically-
Yeah, it's conditioned and we're-
That's good.
Yeah.
Okay, got it. Thanks.
And then on, I guess no one else has questions. I have a couple. On T1, I'm just trying to understand, again, if this is accurate, but at the ground floor plane, you're showing essentially landscaping all the way out to the curb?
Uh, hang on just a second.
It's basically the cover page.
Oh, the, on, on the cover page, yeah. If you, if you go to sheet, zooming in on this. Sheet L dash 1.0, probably of your pre, oh, yeah, that's on, that's, yeah, we-
Yes. Steve will get it.
That has the landscape plan at grade level.
Is it something you can put up on the screen?
That's what he's looking for now.
All right, thank you.
What was it, L?
So there's street trees along Fremont, and then there's some planters at the recessed entryway and some bench seating, along with our required bicycle racks. And then all along A Street, there's no pedestrian sidewalk along A Street, and it's all landscaping. That's consistent with what's out there today, and it's also consistent with the Loyola Corner specific plan, because they have the pedestrian traffic on the opposite side of
Okay. And then you've got the PG&E vault, that's subterranean.
Yes, that is subterranean. Up towards the Miramonte kind of corner right there.
And then, I guess just, you're thinking around the, on A, I guess I'm looking at A-11, you're thinking around a screen wall into the garage versus solid wall along that elevation?
Yeah, in, yeah, in previous versions, that trash enclosure came all the way out to Miramonte.
Sorry, the opposite side, right? This is-
A Street.
Oh, I'm sorry, on A Street.
Yeah.
So I'm, question-
It looks like there's a screen into the garage-
That's correct, because there's an opening into the, there's an opening into the garage.
What kind of opening? What do you mean?
Well, like a window opening.
Right, right. And that's my question, is why a window opening versus solid?
Oh, well, we, you're required garage ventilation, which has to be 50% of the garage, so we have cross-flow ventilation through the garage, and then that is screened with landscaping.
Got it. And so you can't get that ventilation just through the opening of the, of the door?
No, because then we don't, then we only have, we only have ventilation on one side. We need cross-ventilation through the garage. Great. And again, that's screened with landscaping, so.
Perfect. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. So with that, we'll move to public comment. We've got a number of speaker cards, so we're going to go down to two minutes. I will call, there's, we, plenty of precedent. We typically do it when there's seven or eight or 10, and we're twice that, so it's typically what happens. So I just reiterate to not repeat what people have already said. And I will call the three names, and so if you could go in that order, and I'll continue to call out three names, just so everyone can get prepared. The first speaker is Debbie Skelton.
Yeah, we, mine is three minutes. Could you give me a few minutes to look at?
Sure. So then we're going to go Jan Tovis, Thomas, Thomas?
Yeah, mine's quick.
Okay, great.
I can give Debbie one of my minutes.
And then-
Okay, could she give me one of her minutes? Sure. They said yes.
Anyone? I think we did it the last one, didn't we?
Well, we seeded whole blocks. We seeded whole blocks before, but I mean, whatever.
Okay.
But it's fine.
Any, we don't typically do that, do we?
No, actually, no.
Okay. So we're going to keep it to two. So Jan, Amy Feldman, and then Don Anderson.
Hello. I'm Jan Thomas, and I live at 728 Loyola Drive in Los Altos. I've spoken to you before. I have already brought up our safety issues from the past, and I, I realize that you are moving along with that plan, and it appears to me that you do not share the same concerns for the bike lanes, and I haven't heard that mentioned here for along Avenue A. So I'm here to go on record that I'm still opposed to this project because of that. And that's where I'm, I'm basically stopping at this point, to go on record for that. Thank you.
Thank you. Amy Feldman, Don Anderson, and then Manny Martin.
Hello, I'm Amy Feldman, and I'll be really brief. I'm just here to support the project. It's architecturally thoughtful design, it's aligned with the community, it's focused on helping the community, and it's providing additional needed housing in the community of Los Altos, which I think is a very good thing. So I'm here just to support the project.
Thank you. Don Anderson, Manny Martin, and Sandra Salinger.
Admiring the mission statement. I just hope we can achieve that. I guess I have negative feelings about the, the project. I'm sorry that I haven't appeared when it was in a conceptual stage. I have six concerns. One is in the construction itself, and in particular with regards to the garage. Previously, there was a service station on site with the tanks, and I don't know if there's been a soil test made, but that would have to be made, and maybe the tankage is still there, I'm not sure. And so I think that's a, an important consideration. And then the, during the construction, when you do any excavating, my back neighbor, he has gone down and, and he will be having a basement, and I, and he has advised me that the contractor said it would take 18 months, probably more like two years. And during that time, there will have to be provisions for the construction vehicles and the grading equipment, and that would mean what, the closure of what, what do you call, Street A or something like that? They have to be somewhere. Traffic congestion, it's only going to get worse. The garage exit, every time a car pulls in and out of that garage, it's going to obstruct the flow of traffic. Well, I got a half a minute to go. I won't make it.
Sorry, Doc.
I will say that there's 11 arteries going into Loyola Corners. There's five-
Doc, I'm sorry, we're, we're gonna have to cut you off, or we'll be, oh, is that 30 minutes? Sorry. Go ahead.
That's the more time.
Go ahead, sorry.
No, there's 11 access both north and south of Loyola Corners. Traffic's really going to only get worse. And then the first floor business requirements, the access pedestrian-wise is going to be very uncut off.
Go ahead, I'll give you 15 more seconds since I-
Okay. And also, businesses require for the first floor, both pedestrian access as well as deliveries. Federal Express trucks will have to park in the curb, impeding traffic, and that has to be appreciated. The second floor, that'll be 24/7 of carbon emissions from the exhaust and noise, and the, and then the last, or appearance has to be considered, and I think the, the whole structure is too bulky. It's a, it fits the elephant-on-a-post-it-stamp type of design for the Loyola Corners.
Thanks, Doc. I'm gonna have to interrupt you there.
Okay.
I appreciate it.
My final recommendation would be to re-turf the area as was, had been done.
Okay, so Manny Martin, hopefully, Nancy Martin, sorry. Sandra Salinger, Terri Well, Wild.
Good evening. I'm Nancy Martin. I live at 1212 Heritage Court, and I was here at the last meeting, and I don't know if you, if all of you were here at the last meeting, but I can appreciate Mr. Bunker's hard work to develop his small piece of land to maximize his profits, but just because something can be built, doesn't mean it should be built. Unfortunately, this is being built at the expense of the safety of our children that are trying to come down from the country club area. That bike path goes nowhere right now across the bridge, so this is the one and only time that we have to get this right. If this building is built, we won't be able to put a bike path in. It's just going to stay that way. And it, it would work out so well if the city would buy the land, which is what we proposed, sell something else in the city, like the land next to the library over there, Woodland Library. There's lots of places we can sell. Buy this land, do it right, finally take the time to get it right, because it's just going to get more developed, and we don't want to be piecemealing it. So I, I guess my, my last feeling is, the planning department and city council, you're supposed to be here for us to develop what's best for us, not one man who doesn't even live in Los Altos and the person from, doesn't live in Los Altos. This is about us. So that's what I would ask, that you just try to get it right. Thank you so much.
Thank you. And I'm going to remind the audience to please not clap, jeer, throw anything. Want to try to be respectful of everyone who's coming up to speak.
Good evening, Commissioners. My name is Sandy Salinger. My husband and I have lived in Los Altos about three blocks from Loyola Corners for over 50 years, so we're very familiar with the area. We walk and drive there very frequently. And I won't spend a lot of time reiterating what I said at the September meeting. I just want to remind you that there is a specific vision plan for Loyola Corners, and this massive building on this tiny lot does not fit the requirements of that plan. And in addition, the two proposed retail stores, and in fact, Mr. Bunker today said retail office, and I believe that office is not allowed in a commercial neighborhood area. And I would want to, if this is against our wishes okayed, I would want a prohibition against having offices there. And I'm saying, please do not approve this project for Mr. Bunker, who lives in Saratoga and does not really care about the damage that he does to our neighborhood. Revitalize Loyola Corners. Don't destroy it. Thank you. I'd also like to hear where everybody else who speaks is from, whether they're from Los Altos or elsewhere. I think it's important.
Okay, so I have just T, Darren-
Terrence Wild.
Okay. Oh, sorry. Terrence Wild, then just a T. Darren Vade.
Yes, I'm here to encourage support for the project. I think it will make a real positive contribution to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Where do you live?
I'm from Los Altos.
Okay.
But I live, I work here, and I spend money here, and I help support the economy here.
Great. And I'm going to remind everyone again, please. T, 53 Almond Avenue?
My full name's there. It's not there? Oh. Somebody might have written another one for me. Do I, do you want me to write it down for you first?
If you don't mind, but go ahead after, we'll pass it down to you.
And just so we can get the notes properly, if you, when you step up to the mic, if you can say your full name, so you can-
Okay. My full name is Tara Galafshon. Address, 53 Almond Avenue. I grew up in Los Altos. I spent a lot of time in Los Altos, and I've observed the vast changes that have happened here in Los Altos, one of them being the large hotel that's right here in downtown that is similar to this kind of building in my eyes. I'm also involved, you know, as far as looking at this from a real estate perspective and looking at the surrounding properties. And I believe that this will add to the value of the surrounding properties. I agree that there is some kind of low maintenance, it appears, around that area with the buildings surrounding. And I believe that something like this will really elevate that corner, elevate the businesses, elevate the mindset of the people. And I believe that it'll do as much good as something like that hotel at the corner of downtown, just like something like this at the corner of Loyola Corners. Thank you.
Thank you. Darren, then Amanda Stewart and Monica Bunker.
Hello, my name is Darren Fadai. I am a current resident in Los Altos. I do think it is important to say where I'm from. I was working in Foster City for about two years, trying to work my way closer to work, to cut that commute down a little bit. Found myself moving into Campbell, rent getting raised up and up again, and having to move further and further away from Los Altos, where I now work, and I've been working for the last few years on and off. I do think that the structure is something that the community needs. I do think that there is a housing crisis, and it is very real to have families being pushed out of these kinds of areas in favor of just not having enough greenery or something like that. I do think this would bring in a good, like, good families that can really make use of that housing. And I know that public safety is a huge concern, and I'm right on board with that. But I do see that there is a lot of traffic right now because of the drive-up, and I think everyone notices that as well. Having this be mostly residential will be cutting that down. There will be people going in, families in and out, you know, once or twice per day. It's not going to be the constant traffic that you currently see with the drive-up window and a coffee shop, you know, fully functioning coffee shop with that drive-up window. There's many people that just come in, in and out, including a lot of the bikers that do go on their morning bike rides over the weekend. And I really do think that with the wide angles, we've seen this in other places in Los Altos and in other cities around the county, where they do have these wide-angle driveways. And they are effective. You are able to see, that's a thirty-second mark.
I'm gonna have to cut you off.
I'm wrapped up, that's okay.
Okay, thank you. Oh. Sorry. Sorry. I missed one meeting and I forget how this whole thing works. Amanda Stewart, Monica Bunker, Thomas Maderas.
Where's Amanda? Hello, my name is Amanda. I'm a local resident and a supporter of the Loyola Corners project. I think the woodsy architecture of the new project closely adheres to the aesthetic of beautiful green and leafy Los Altos. The style of this building is as innocuous as a modern building could be. While serving a productive purpose, this building will not be an eyesore to the natural surroundings of this area. The proposed property has plenty of accessible parking, sidewalk space, and bike racks. In conclusion, I stand in support for this product... Project, thank you.
Thank you. Monica Bunker.
All right, hello. I am Monica Bunker. And I just wanna start out by saying, I've been working there for three years. And I am there sometimes all day long. And I've probably only seen one kid on his bike come through that property. Just personally, that's the only kid that I've ever seen walk, like, bike by. Maybe they go around it somehow, I don't know. But I would just like to say that. Let's see. So, if Los Altos is family-oriented and all of you are family-oriented, then I would just like to point out that my family has been... Had a financial burden from this situation. I mean, like, all these years trying to come back and get this approved, like... I mean, that's just been a lot for my family personally. So, I would love some support on that. The business has not been successful. We barely break even. I don't really know, like, what I can do any further to make the coffee shop more successful. The building is completely not, you know, adequate to have anything really running in that space. I had to get a new outlet just to have a microwave and a toaster oven working at the same time. It's awkward. It's not very attractive. It's just old. It would be really nice if it could look a little bit better. I think my dad's been doing nothing but trying to improve your community and be, you know, on point with what everybody's saying and addressing your concerns as best he possibly can. You know, he's an older gentleman, and he's at the end of his career. And it'd be nice if he could, you know, end it on a good note, or whatever. Yeah, you can laugh at that, guys, but I'm serious. You know, I don't think that this is gonna ruin the community. I don't think it's gonna add any traffic. I don't know what else to say.
Thank you. Thomas Maderas, Paula Stan... Stanick. And then, the last speaker card that I have is Debbie Skelton. So, if I haven't called your name.
Hello there, Thomas here. And I am in full support of this project. I have known Greg for quite some time now, probably my entire life. We're not directly related, but I can say this, that he talks about this project quite frequently. He's extremely excited about it. I do understand the address in regards to the bike lane. That's definitely something children are a priority to everybody. And I do feel that with its current standing as a drive-through business right now, there may be a little more traffic with, you know... Instead of having a drive-through where constantly cars are coming in for coffee or getting a quick coffee fix or whatnot, if we have residences, there should be less traffic throughout there. I do feel that that would help. In regards to a bike path as recommended by one of the previous speakers, that's also a great idea. I'm sure Greg would love to help with that. As far as, you know, all the amendments that's been going on for the past six years, I feel that that's a wonderful thing. And he's very cooperative about that. So, I wanna commend him, and I wanna commend all of you for your time, consistently, over and over again. I just feel that everything can work out for the better for everybody. And I wanna thank you for your time once again. Thank you.
Thank you. Paula, and then Debbie.
Good evening, my name is Paula Stanick. I've lived in Los Altos since nineteen seventy-five. Let's see. At the last Commissioner meeting, it was brought up, one of you compared this building to the hotel at the triangle in downtown. And Mr. Bunker's daughter also referenced it, I think. But I don't think this building compares to that in that there's an open space at one point of the triangle. The one side has parking and a sidewalk and setbacks. The side that faces San Antonio has setbacks and greenery. And the part that faces the parking lot has a parking lot. The new design has added extra sidewalk space on Fremont Avenue. It does not address A Street at all. A Street has been our biggest concern. The reason there are no students or kids biking on that street is there's no place to bike. It's a narrow street. This building doesn't need setbacks. It's gonna go right up to the curb or to the edge of the street. And that place needs a bike lane. The bridge has bike lanes that go to nowhere. And there's like seven schools that go down... The kids go down to get to... Off of Miramonte and A Street. I think that the Commissioners should recommend that this be turned into a open space and that the city buy the property and make that street wider.
Thank you.
Hello, W. Skelton, ten forty-five Fremont Avenue. So, I'm opposed to the building for the development for all the reasons that have been discussed in previous meetings and in correspondence. I did take some time this week to read the staff report for the project. And I wanna address one thing that was there. I was taken aback by the letter from Mr. Bunker's attorney, William R. Seligman. He states, "The redevelopment of nine-nine-nine Fremont has been a six-year odyssey during which Mr. Bunker and his investors have had to deal with changing development standards and neighborhood desires that are often at odds with the very development standards adopted by the city." This is not true. The Loyola Corner specific plan was adopted in nineteen ninety and revised in twenty seventeen. The plan is not a moving target. If you read it, it's clear. Mr. Bunker was aware of the Loyola Corner specific plan when he submitted his early plans of a three-story building. I personally pointed out to Mr. Bunker, the planning commission, some of you are here, and the city council at that time, that I was able to identify twenty-eight references to two stories in the Loyola Corner specific plan. I actually submitted them with page numbers. Mr. Bunker made a choice to spend two million dollars of his own money and his investors' money, according to Mr. Seligman, on a plan that clearly does not meet the guidelines of the Loyola Corner specific plan. Mr. Seligman refers to a six-year odyssey and paints Mr. Bunker as a victim. But I contend that this six-year odyssey is not victimizing Mr. Bunker, but the residents, you people, the city folks, and the council. I feel that our time has been wasted on a project that does not meet the Loyola Corner specific plan. It's been ridiculously long for those of us who have only asked that he follow the Loyola Corner specific plan and the local zoning rules. So, here we are, six years later, with a plan that still doesn't meet the Loyola Corners specific plan.
Thank you. We have one more. Linda Roy.
Hi, I live around the corner, just past the Heritage Oaks Park. And I walk, bike, and drive by that corner all of the time. I am in support of denser buildings, better housing. But if you're gonna build denser, you also need to balance it with the street life. If it takes four feet for two people to walk abreast, five feet is enough. Eight feet is very little. You need to have life of the city. I would be in favor of seeing a taller building and more street space. It's not safe for kids. It's not face for walking. I just think, if you make more street space, more life of the city, giving more space to the ground for landscaping, reducing global warming, planting trees, you'll just make it a much more vibrant space. And then, go up a little.
Thank you. Okay, with no more speaker cards, we'll close with public comment and move to discussion.
Amiga?
Okay.
All right. So, I'll just start off by saying what I said last time. Based on the updated specific plan and all of the objective criteria that we have in place, I think that the project is consistent with every requirement. There might be different opinions and different viewpoints about the design or the massing, but it does meet our objective criteria. The one aspect that I did think was concerning at the last meeting was the south corner at Miramonte and Fremont and the other corner at Fremont and A Street. So, having the building mass kind of pushed back, I thought would give pedestrians more visibility. It might prevent an unsafe situation, especially since there's a right-turn yield right there. I do think that the changes that you made to the corners are successful. I think that the changes, especially at Miramonte and Fremont, I think actually makes the building look better. The goal obviously was not that. The goal was more for safety, but I think it made it look a little bit more dynamic. I will say that the parking is still a little concerning. Not so much with the number of spots, but just vehicular flow. I'm just imagining, you know, four cars kind of exiting and entering at the same time. And I'm not sure how that's gonna look. But again, I don't even know how often that can even happen with just three units there. The garage door side opening, as Commissioner Brusick mentioned, it was more the safety issue. So, just I don't think it's a good idea to have an opening where someone can just walk right in. And then, yeah. But overall, based on the objective criteria, I would recommend approval and to have it be seen by the city council.
Before we move to...
Of course.
Just if anyone had ex parte communications, just reminding everyone that... Should just bring those up.
Thank you for the reminder. I did not have any ex parte communication. So, I said this last time, this is an incredibly intense development for a very tiny lot. But as Meruus points out, it does meet all the objective criteria by which we've been working all along. I was struck by the Enchante Hotel reference because there was an opportunity missed there. We have a dreadful traffic situation where State and Main and Civic Center crossover, the library, that whole area. We had an opportunity there to clean that up, to straighten up the parking and the driving areas. And it was not done because various political pieces didn't fall into place, for which I have been very sorry. And this feels very much like that, in that we have these bike lanes on our fancy redesigned bridge over foothill, and it goes nowhere. And despite anecdotal evidence, it is a huge safe routes-to-school area. Everybody comes down from the country cub area. And we wanna encourage our kids to drive... To not drive, but to bike, and there's nowhere to go. And there were choices that were made, therefore, that... To bring the building to a point where some... As Mr. Bunker said, he seeded land in an earlier development. If more could have been seeded to the street on A, on that side of the building, that little bit smaller on one level, perhaps, perhaps we could have resolved this situation. That it's after the fact, I appreciate that. The Loyola Corner specific plan really wanted this to be an open space. That was the vision. But the city councils, past and current, have not seen this as a priority, to put money into it. And I'm very sorry to Loyola Corner residents because they're the ones who are gonna have to live with this. Now, I've said all those good things. It's gonna be a huge change. I appreciate that. If this goes through, this will be a tremendous change. And I can anticipate whether it'll be good or bad. But I do need to say that I'm probably the only one here with this dark memory of when this thing started a long time ago. And I have seen applications which were non-compliant in many ways, which went through legal action in the non-compliance and were told that it was not possible. And I have to say begrudgingly that this has come a long way. And in terms of echoing the architecture and the informality of the architectural style that we look for when we're doing Village or even Los Altos kind of architecture, I think it's been very successful. I don't know if six architects needed to be in on that. Might have been a camel instead of a horse. But for those reasons that Meruus said, I think by objective criteria, this meets all the standards which are defined in our codes. And we are not paid the big bucks that city council is. If city council wants to look at this and say, we can solve two objectives at the same time, we can have an open space and we can have a bike path, it's on them to do it. Our job is to review things on the basis of what we have, and on the basis of what we have and the progress that's come through, I think this is successful. I do think that if you're going to say that the garage is secure in the evening for the residents, then you do need to provide the same kind of transparent security gate at the trash area so that you have a sense of enclosure at night. And I do think that it's possible to find garage doors that use belts instead of chains to be quieter, so it's not quite such a thing for the residents. But on the whole, I would be... I'm uncomfortable not recommending it.
So, I think sometime...
So I think sometimes it's difficult to put yourself in the perspective where, and I understand what the residents want, and, you know, it'd be nice to have a park. It'd be nice to have a park every few blocks in Los Altos, but the owner of the property, regardless of how long or short this process has taken, has come forward with a proposal. We're reviewing that proposal today, based both on current city zoning, specific to Loyola Corners, and specific to decisions that have been made as recently as almost exactly two years ago in the updated October 2017 specific plan. And in my mind, not in Mr. Bunker's mind, I'm sure, but some costs are irrelevant to the decision we're making. I don't care if he spent $20 million on this. We have a proposal in front of us. He does, I know, but that doesn't matter. We have something in front of us today. How does it fit what the city has laid out for Loyola Corners? And we'll read just a little bit of, let's start with traffic circulation, which I agree is not the best, but two years ago, "Traffic circulation for the Loyola Corner Specific Plan in the resolution adopted was the city will cease further implementation of the traffic circulation changes shown in Phase One and Phase Two illustrative plans unless otherwise approved by the city council. A Street shall remain as a two-way street unless otherwise approved by the city council." So the proposal in front of us doesn't change anything on A Street, and only the city council really can affect that change if they want. I think it would be difficult in the current situation. Additionally, policies for the specific parcel, called photo drive-up at the time, two years ago, allows retail or restaurant uses on the ground floor and office residential use on the second floor not to exceed two stories and 30 feet in height. So I'm just reading that verbatim because it was adopted two years ago, and this application in front of us fits all the criteria that the city has put forward as recently as two years ago. And as I think my fellow commissioners have said, this objectively is approvable. I agree that the cutting in the corners, I think, helps with some of the safety aspects, and I'll leave it up to the architects to say whether they're heavy or not heavy or whatever. So to me, you know, the burden of A Street and the traffic and all that stuff falls on the city to address. They chose not to change it through the process with the community at that time, and therefore this project appears to be in complete compliance with the existing Loyola Corners Specific Plan and therefore is approvable. I just don't see any other way around it.
On the issue of compliance, I completely agree with members of this commission, and they've spoken eloquently regarding that. So I'm not going to go into that, into that element. I want to support this project. I think there's a lot of great things about it from an architectural standpoint, and I can go into that a bit later. But however, I do feel, when I first saw the project, I believe, the last year, I did question some of the features or attributes of the project as it relates to the streetscape and the sidewalk areas. It feels extremely, to me, especially the treatment on A Street, very anti-urban. Not having a sidewalk there, to me, feels very, very strange. And I'm not sure why we are allowing this to happen. It's, this is a, as a part of an urban fabric, it's a city block, and I think it needs to be treated as such. And as it relates to, as the streetscape relates to Miramonte Avenue, I think it's very, very disappointing how that elevation is rendered and how there is no greenery or any sort of vegetation along there of any real sort of substance. And, you know, because architecturally, this project is doing great things. It's a very complicated site. It's got four elevations. They're all very different conditions, and I think the architect has done a great job, to a certain extent, addressing Fremont Avenue and A Street. I believe those elevations are really quite successful. However, to me, the Miramonte Avenue elevation really falls apart, and it doesn't do justice to the rest of the project. I'm not really sure exactly what remedy can be done, other than I think, you know, this is a, I don't know how long that frontage is, but without any sort of substantial vegetation, I think it's going to feel oppressive, walking down that sidewalk, which is not very wide, without any sort of greenery planters or planting strips, trees of any, you know, substance, is going to really feel oppressive. And it's disappointing because in some ways, this is, you know, it's a bit of a, I mean, similar to the hotel in the sense that it's a bit of a gateway project into this neighborhood. And I think it's a poor representation, or a poor sort of, yeah, poor representation of what great architecture could be and great planning can be. And I think it's, it would be disappointing for not only residents but visitors alike for years to come. I think the sort of gesture of putting greenery on the second level is a, it's a start, but it's woefully inadequate for me. And I think in terms of reducing or taking the bite out of the corners, interesting idea. I don't think it's very successful, frankly, because you have, you have a corner that's bit out on the A Street corner and Fremont, but then you have a post that feels really awkward. It doesn't feel really resolved from a volumetric standpoint. If indeed we are going to accept a non-sidewalk condition, I'm not sure why we really need to have a cut at that, at that corner, as you won't really have pedestrians engaging in that, on that side of the building. As it relates to the corner, the cut on Fremont and Miramonte, I think, again, to me, it's not quite as satisfying as the solution with the rounded corners, which, again, feels like you're really addressing that corner in a more substantive and stronger way. So to me, the sort of the cutbacks is a gesture. It's, but rather, I don't think it's going to be as effective as maybe some of my fellow commissioners feel. So again, I really want to support this project, but I think there's a few really fundamental aspects about this project that really bother me. And from, and it's not really about the architecture in this case, because I think architecturally, there's a lot of great things here and there's a lot of great resolutions. I really like the Fremont Avenue elevation as well as the A Street elevation. I think they're really well-composed. I do feel, again, you know, I'll just reiterate, the Miramonte Avenue elevation really, for me, kind of falls apart. And it's a shame, but it's more principally, it's more of the way that the building is sited. It's more that the treatment of the sidewalks along Miramonte and not having a sidewalk on A Street, to me, is really bothersome. And I think, hopefully, I'm not sure what exactly can be done, but hopefully you can reconsider some of those, some of those areas. Because as you've heard from the, from the community, this can help, help to sort of mitigate some of the issues that have been surfaced tonight. Thank you.
So Duhoe, I completely agree with you. I'm sorry I was not here at the last meeting. I, I'm disappointed that the applicant was given direction not to have landscaping along that elevation, right? So they're only reacting to direction, but I think there's a lot of things that could have been done that would have preserved the view corridor for traffic safety. And even if, you know, if there was a little bit of planting and maybe there's, you know, and you had a green wall there or something to really break down that massing at the street level. I don't think that putting two small windows into a trash room is really successful in solving that problem. You know, I do think that, that there were some opportunities for creative solutions. And, but I do feel that that's a direction that they, that they got, and it's unfortunate, and it's unfair for us at this point, after they've done what was asked of them, to, you know, give them a different direction. And so that's where I struggle. I don't think that kind of planter boxes at the second level that you can't access make sense. I think that's going to be a maintenance nightmare. There's going to be a lot of dead plants up there. It's really going to look bad. And I don't think that having a door off of a trash room is going to look good in that elevation. So I would ask, perhaps, you know, before you bring it to, if it does go to city council, that you guys maybe look at that and figure out some other way of addressing that. Because in kind of the pretty picture, I think, you know, it looks good, but it's just not reality. I do think that you need to close off the garage with some kind of, you know, iron gate or something like that, that would be transparent and provide a more controlled environment for the residents. You know, again, for me, I would love to have seen just some more greenery along, along that, that side and breaking down the massing. I don't think, I agree with Duhoe in that the, I actually don't mind the building going out. It feels more, I actually don't like the way it's cut back on either side. I think it feels more resolved, more refined, more thoughtful to, you know, to have it going all the way out. Again, we don't really have a sidewalk along A Street, so I'm not necessarily understanding the reason that we would need kind of to cut that back from a safety perspective. And the reality is, I just don't see a lot of people walking down kind of Miramonte all the way to the corner of Fremont, because I think you're going to cut over and if you're going in that direction, go along A Street on the other side. It just seems like that's like a kind of corner to nowhere. And so I just, I don't see all of, I'm not concerned about the traffic there, nor am I concerned about people being able to walk on a sidewalk around a building. And I think it would feel more, the building would feel more elevated if it, if it didn't have, call it the hanging chap or whatever we're going to call that, that thing. You know, I think the other thing for me would be that it would be great, and again, not that we have much purview over this, but I think it would be nice to be able to connect the staircase to the garage so that we're not forcing everyone into one elevator. And you've got the, and if that goes down, then, you know, everyone's got to go around. And so perhaps losing a little bit of that storage space, or whatever that is, to provide direct access to the garage would be beneficial for the, for the residents. I don't know that we can mandate that, but you guys may want to as owners. And, you know, other than that, I mean, it is, it is a good-looking building that fits within the character. It conforms. And so I think there's some minor tweaks that we can recommend, but I, you know, from my perspective, it's something that we can, that's approvable. So...
I have a question from horticultural folks, which is, the Miramonte side faces east, and it's right at the property line, the building, more or less by six inches. If, is it possible to inset a planter and get enough light to have something survive there at ground level? Because I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the transparent screens that are large-scale sort of window things to the left of the car gate. And I'm wondering if you, if you could inset, because there is, there is some space, they could, the space, the car space could shift over perhaps a wee bit. But is it possible for something to survive if it's not open to the sky but is in a recess? I'm not so good on that stuff.
The proper, some plants can, right?
Certainly, yeah. I think so.
Because that could be both at the trash room, odd space, and at the side there, maybe. So you'd get maybe 16 to eight-foot planters, maybe? Maybe three? Just a thought.
Good thought.
So it's, one of the things that you've pointed out is that, you know, that they did what the direction was on that Miramonte side, and they actually also did what our direction was at the last minute and, and, you know, clipped some corners. So, but we have all those, the corner options are, you know, all there. We can...
But the direction to not plant was not to put street planting because the sidewalk was narrow. What I'm suggesting is maybe they could be planting inboard and not impact the street.
Right, though, yeah. I mean, I don't disagree, but the direction was...
The direction was narrow.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think, again, I think it's a, it, it, sort of planting along those windows along that ground floor, to me, is sort of akin to what's shown on the second level, which, again, is more of a, it's kind of a lip service and greenery. What I'm, what I have the biggest problem with is the width of that sidewalk, five feet. It's a very high-traffic street with fast traffic, and I'm, I'm walking for a very long time on this very narrow sidewalk with traffic whizzing by, and I don't have any sense of security or protection from that. I think that's, to me, that's a huge problem.
But, and then, I don't know, the residents would obviously say more, but when I walk around there... around there, and particularly when I went out to look at this, I think very few people are going to walk along the Miramonte side. You're going to tend to access that retail along Fremont.
Well, especially if you build a building like this. You're right.
Right, but even now, you're still exposed. I mean, no matter what you do, you might be prettier in your exposure, but you're still going to be exposed. It's just, it's not a comfortable, and I wasn't even comfortable on one of the crosswalks up where A Street sort of ends at Miramonte, this crosswalk, but you take your life, you know, in your hands, and that's a crosswalk, which, you know, maybe they should get rid of because it implies you can actually cross there. But anyway, I think the, and I'm not a resident, but I do go to Laola Corners, and the most usable path there is along Fremont and that crosswalk at Fremont and A Street. And I, and there's no sidewalk along the AC Street side right now. I don't know what the requirement to put one in would do. And I agree, Miramonte is less than ideal, but it's still a very exposed, it's just, to me, it's, it's right along Fremont where the traffic is, you know, the pedestrian traffic is largely going to go.
No, but it's also, you know, I mean, great, great design does a number of things, right? It gives you the perception that things are safe when, when in fact, you know, if there's a planter there or a long planter with greenery and trees growing in it, you know, that, just that little bit, even if the sidewalk is the same width, you get, you get a sense of, you know, it's that feeling of security, that added security or that added buffer, which I think great design can do.
Well, I would always support greenery.
There is a huge opportunity here with this, and I think this is a very, very important piece of property, not only as a kind of continuum of that sort of retail street coming from Fremont, but also as a kind of gateway into this neighborhood. So it's a very charged piece of, piece of land. And I think, you know, extra care should be given to how that feels, both from a dimensional standpoint, an architectural standpoint, but also from a perception standpoint.
I think this is chicken or egg. If it's done well, then you will feel good. If it's not done well, it's exactly the way it is now, and it's not successful now.
That's correct.
So there's an opportunity missed, is what you're saying.
Yes, yes, maybe, to sort of cut to the chase. I think there's a tremendous opportunity to create something that everyone can be proud of in this location. And again, yes, we need this project in a way, right? This is a very, I think it is a positive project, but to that end, I think it needs to be an excellent piece of
Well, the solution may be potentially not plant, I mean, I agree with, green is always good. I mean, there's, nobody's going to argue with that. Maybe this, these spaces would benefit from green walls.
But I guess, yeah, no, absolutely. But I guess where I'm going, unfortunately, is, is greater setbacks is kind of where I'm going, and that's, that's a much taller, much bigger ask, right? At this point. So I understand the situation that we're in, but
But I will say, I do agree with the speaker, I think it was Linda Roy, who came up and said, greater setbacks and more height. And I think many of us have said that, you know, sitting up here, but that's not, then you start talking about more height and, and we have a little host of
You have different people that come out
speaking against that, so, but I agree with you that that certainly would have helped. Just feels like, from an equity, equitable standpoint, you know, they've kind of done what they were asked to do.
And that's actually why, when we, if we get to our next agenda item, why one of the issues that we flagged is the zero setback that is not just here, but is, you know, scattered throughout town, and you wonder why we have zero setbacks, but
Yeah, no, I think, I think, you know, sort of zoning codes and, you know, building codes, whatever, the rules are rules. It's just, one could take those rules and then apply a measure of good judgment on top of that as well, given, given the specific context and the situation. I guess that's what, that's my point, is that do we, do we actually need to go property line to property line here at the expense of a sidewalk and at the expense of a very, you know, narrow, unsort of, unloved sidewalk on Miramonte, right?
Yeah, just to comment on that, I think that at the last meeting, I think that, I think we kind of understood that the Miramonte sidewalk seemed a little tight. And I think that that was part of the reason of asking for that corner, because, you know, when I went to the site, I felt like it was a very unsafe situation because you'd have to walk almost to the rounded corner to see the car coming. And to me, that was something small that maybe we could do, that we could kind of push the building back a little bit and do so. Now, I did think that they were going to do the cut on the first and second floor, but they did it just on the first, so it gives it a different look. My, my thought was that it was going to be first and second, the way that it is on the other top corner, the north corner. But I do think from a safety perspective, I think that that is important, just because it does, it worries me that someone might be walking or jogging, and that yield is going to potentially hit them. But I agree, I think that the other corner on A Street and Fremont, it's more so if people are going north, could they see the car coming? But you're right, it's not absolutely necessary on that top corner. But the bottom, I do think that it needs to be cut.
Sorry, but what's a safety concern? I'm not understanding.
If, if a car is going down Miramonte and making a right on Fremont, there's a right yield, so there's no stoplight. So a car could essentially just go right through and
Yield for the car to turn right onto Fremont?
Yeah, it's a yield, not a stoplight.
And who would they be, where would the conflict be?
If a person was walking down the sidewalk on Fremont going south, then a potentially, if a right, if a right turn was being made by a car, they could potentially get hit.
They're going to that crosswalk right there?
Yeah. So opening it up gives it a little bit of more, a little bit more time for someone to see that a car is coming, instead of having to go all the way to the corner.
And the fact that there's a crosswalk, as Sally pointed out, doesn't necessarily mean that it's a safe one to use. It's just marked.
Mr. Chairman, if I might provide some assistance, I, I think from what I've heard amongst the commissioners and the comments that you've made, it sounds like there could be a desire to ask the applicant if they would be willing to go back and study the plans one more time to see if a design or concept can be arrived at that would address some of the concerns that I've heard mentioned by the commissioners this evening. At least you'd have feedback from the applicant on whether or not he's willing to go back and make an attempt to address those, or if he would like the commission to call for a vote on the application and the modifications that he's made and has in front of you this evening. He might
Okay.
Seek his input at this point.
I'm okay with that.
If you're, if you're all done with your comments right now.
Any other comments?
I think we've commented out.
Okay, so I guess a question for the applicant would be, is this some, hearing what you're hearing tonight, is this something that you'd want to, you'd be willing to go back and consider in coming back to the next?
No, I would like to vote this evening, and I would just say to John that, you know, I'm happy to have some, you know, if you, if you would just approve the project this evening, if you would like to then have us work with John directly, maybe we could make some little tune, fine tune, tuning to it for the city council perhaps, but I really think that we have addressed issues repeatedly for six years, and, you know, we've done what you've asked. We put the, you know, we used to have trees on Miramonte, you asked us to take them out. We are happy to, I would say to you, if you approve the project tonight, that we would give you an option of lopping off either corner or restoring the corner of A Street. If you want that to go all the way out and not lop off that corner, that's fine with us. I like the way the commissioner apologizes, Ahi?
Ahi.
Yeah, I like the way it looks locked off. I think that looks lovely. I like the way the sidewalk looks in front of it. As a matter of fact, approve the project tonight, and let's talk about some fabulous piece of art, maybe if you would like something out there under that little area. I think it would look spectacular. However, I just can't keep going back endlessly and making changes to things. I mean, we, we have made changes to things repeatedly, over and over and over. You, you know, we've actually taken out things and put them back, and then taken them out and put them back. No exaggeration, you can't imagine it, but, you know, we've asked to have a balcony, we had a balcony on the second floor there at Miramonte, and you asked us to take it out, you know, years ago. And so I would just say that this is, is as good as it gets, I think. And I think we've done a lot of work. Really appreciate your support this evening in approving the project. I would like to say that, you know, as far as the lifts, we'll have backup electrical generation equipment, and as Phoebe has commented about enclosing the garage with mesh or a gate, we would do that, you know, just inside where that trash enclosure is, so the, at night, the entire parking area is secured. So I would say that we could agree on that. John, are you following that okay? At that request? So to cover Commissioners Ahi, we've reset that, we like it. We'd like to keep it at Miramonte and Fremont there. Now, if you want us to restore the corner at Fremont and A Street, we can. Otherwise, I'm happy to keep it set back. But I don't think there's really anything that's of issue, Mr. Biggs, that is even requested to be addressed here. We're willing to do, I think we've accomplished everything that was requested at the last meeting and subsequently a year ago when we met. I mean, we had a study session 14 months ago, and we listened very closely then. So we, we have, would really request that you vote favorably this evening and move us on to the city council. Thank you.
Thank you.
So I wonder if, on the eyes here, we can talk about the corner treatments and reach a proposal and a consensus, that'll be clear direction, and we can probably make some direction about improving the green side. But let's start with the corners, and I would yield to the architects to
At the corners.
At the corners.
Sitting at the corners.
To address the corners, yes.
I, I think, safety, safety is obviously, should be the driver here. And if my fellow commissioner feels strongly about that, then I will, I will accept his views on that, on that particular issue. And, but I would perhaps urge the architect to consider following through with a similar chamfer on the second floor as well. I think the two, the two geometries feel to me slightly awkward. So if you're going to go with a cut, I would urge you to study using that same geometry on the second level. I don't, I don't particularly feel strongly about that cut. In fact, I think on the A Street Fremont corner, having a post coming down to the, to the, to the ground there feels very, very haphazard. So I would not champion that cut along that side.
Yeah, I would, I would agree with, with that statement. I think that restoring the corner on A Street, I think, is, is fine, and I think that looking at potentially doing the corner on the first and second on, on the other corner, I think, would be something beneficial to look at. So, yeah, I agree.
Me too.
Yes, definitely, whatever. No, no, I mean, you all, yeah, I knew we could reach consensus on that one, so. And then what kind of direction do you think we can give on Miramonte?
It's a tough one.
I mean, I think the message
No, I feel, I feel like I'm sort of, you know, a little bit on today's, on tonight's issues, I feel like I'm a little bit on the, on the extreme side. And I, it's going to be very difficult for me to come to a solution here that I would feel comfortable with, unless there is some, there's a kind of reevaluation of how the building engages that sidewalk, in terms of dimensions.
In terms of the what?
The dimensions.
Oh, the dimensions.
I understand what DuHo is saying, and I repeat what I said earlier, which there was an opportunity missed here, a big one. But this project has been whipsawed so many times through so many city councils and so many planning commissions and so many planning staff members, that I'm not comfortable asking for redesign on Miramonte, even though it would make a much better building. So I think anything they do there is going to be eye-wash, but nonetheless, I think, as Sally points out, any green is better than no green. And if there's a way where the landscape architect can figure out how to get some kind of greenery there without obstructing the sidewalk, that would be a good thing to do before it went to city council, who will no doubt have great opinions about how they would fix the building.
Yeah, I just think that on that side, it's really difficult to try to change anything drastically, but I do think that the kind of trash room cut with that opening and the other side with the two kind of screen openings, there may be some way that you can maybe look at how to add more greenery, which is kind of what Commissioner Bresik mentioned. There may be an opportunity there, especially because you're going to create kind of a safer kind of door next to that garage door, so maybe there's something you can look into. But I agree, it's, it's kind of a tricky situation.
So are we ready to make a motion?
Alex, do you have?
No, I mean, I'm just looking at this again, and I think I think there's, you know, there is opportunities to inset the trash room, to inset the building where the, on the garage side. And to get some greenery into that elevation and have it feel it's a little bit of lipstick on a pig, but I think it does, it will help. And so I would encourage direction to look at those opportunities, because those are not things that should complicate this moving forward and can be addressed.
So can I try to summarize what I think our explicit direction is? And John, you can make sure that you've heard the same things, and then correct me if I'm not capturing it correctly. I think at A Street and Fremont, we're restoring the corner as we saw it last time. And on Fremont and Miramonte, you're going to use a consistent geometric cut shape between the top and the bottom story. And we want the walkthrough portion to be gated and for that whole Miramonte elevation to, for you to explore and hopefully propose an implementation for additional greenery in whatever creative ways you can, your landscape designer can come up with. And I think those were the specifics direction that we agreed on. And then with that, I would say
Sorry, can I just add one more?
Yes, yes.
Just to look at the planter boxes that are inaccessible at this
Ah, yes, yes. So they, make sure that that's a practical So make sure that that's a practical way to deal with the planter boxes, yes. And so with that, then we would, with that specific direction, we would recommend to the City Council approval of design review, use permit and subdivision applications, 18D02, 18UP04 and 18SD02, per the findings and conditions contained in the resolution plus the direction that we gave this evening.
All's in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Yes, opposed.
Passes four to one with Commissioner Duho against. Great. Okay, good luck.
Next item.
Next item is a discussion for topics for joint meeting with City Council. I'd ask everyone to please leave quietly and have your discussions outside so we can continue our meeting.
We will have a three-minute break until we clear.
John, I think we're gonna ask for a three-minute break. Five minutes? So, meeting back to order and starting discussion. Mr. Biggs.
Mr. Chairman, members of the Commission. You last reviewed this at your last meeting on the fourth of October, excuse me, third of October. And you came up with a list that we hopefully have compiled accurately of things or topics that you'd like to discuss with the City Council. There was some direction from the Planning Commission that you, we frame these in the form of questions, which we've attempted to do here. And you've got a list of five things that you could potentially talk to the City Council about at your joint session, which is November the fifth. So with that, I'll open it up to feedback and comments from the Planning Commission.
I wasn't sure that item four actually made it to our discussion. We had members of the public who asked for that. But I wouldn't mind having a discussion here about the appropriateness of the current zoning of that site. I don't see any reason to bring it up. And so that's why I was surprised to see it on the list.
Because I had, thought I had direction to include.
Well, yeah, I thought we had sort of allowed, yeah.
We kept saying this is not agendized.
It was not agendized, but we also had, I thought we did say to put it on, on the list.
On the list.
Because, you know, but I think there's a number of ways to potentially address it, but we're not agendized tonight either, so.
Right. And this is just-
What was your proposal?
My query was, why is this on here? I did not think it was on the list. I only heard members of the public ask for it. And I had an ex parte communication from members of the public who asked me to support it and I, I, it was inappropriate, I felt.
I think it was just up to the Commission to give me feedback on what you thought could be included, so I thought I had captured that as one of the things you-
My reflection as well was-
You asked it.
... direction to put that on there.
That's why they take it.
It was, it was a laundry list, I think, and we were gonna come back and prioritize and figure out if, how we wanted to address it.
And no, this is not the final list, so you're free to amend this, delete items on this list. You're only gonna have, I think, an hour at tops to-
A minute and a half.
Well, that increased from 30 minutes last time.
Oh, is it 30 minutes? It might have been 30, 45 minutes.
Well, you did a good job of organizing it, so it looks like we have less items to cover. But it's really not.
Exactly the same.
But actually, no, you really, the organization makes a lot more sense. Number one is a lot, but-
And I think on number two, the thing that may be missing that's part of that discussion is just, how do they see the mix of BMR units?
With market value.
Do they want all the small units? Do they want a mix of units and, you know, to mirror the mix that's in the development? Sorry about that. My mic was off. So I think some clearer direction on, on that would be helpful.
So it's not necessarily mix, it's actually what they see is the greatest need? Because mix has been fairly well defined. We've always said, I think, that it has to be a mix and it can't be the, you know, the ugly stepchild when we're looking at the affordable units. What I think you're asking is something different, I wanna check.
I think in some of the recent ones that have come up, they've tended to skew towards the smaller units.
So we're looking for what their direction is for, what we should be looking at?
Yeah.
Okay.
Maybe I'm wrong on that.
No, I think they did a fairly, I think a lot of the projects we've seen have done a fairly good job of having the mix somewhat, not necessarily have the really high, you know, largest ones, but having a fairly good mix of one and twos.
Corner, right.
Yeah, yeah.
Bottom corner.
Well, there's placement mix.
Well, there's not necessarily placement, but I'm just talking about size.
And then there's size, you're talking about the size of the BMR units.
Yeah.
But my impression is they've been actually fairly well first.
Just to comment, we, yeah. I believe in the code, it tell, it has some suggestions or requirements to provide a mix of units. And we, we look as staff members, we look at making sure that the BMR units are in a similar ratio as ones and two and three-bedroom units in the projects, so they can't just say all the one-bedrooms are your BMR units. I think the difficulty sometimes is then saying amongst the categories of affordability, should the low be a one-bedroom or should it be a two-bedroom? Should the moderates, like, how do you decipher between affordability ratings and the, or categories and the mixture of bedroom counts in that development? So that's where there's, you know, if they wanna provide some direction.
I think that, sorry, I think that was a discussion at the last El Camino one, where I think there was mention that the three-bedroom, very low, would be difficult to do.
Yes, of course.
From a financial standpoint. So, so maybe, you know, that's a discussion of what mix do they want, but also let them know that maybe it might not be possible to get an even mix.
Yeah, not a perfect mix.
But that's not what it says. What it says here is affordability by design. That's the question that came up in the most recent project, is that if we can get small, many smaller units, is that a direction that should, we should encourage, that staff should encourage? Because affordability by design is different than how we're dealing with the BMRs. The BMRs, as Steve points out, are codified in many ways. There is some discretion, is what he was just talking about. But there is an understanding that it shouldn't be the ugly stepchild. That's clear and that's supported by the code. The question is, at the last project-
Twenty-eight versus twenty-one.
-there was a choice and council chose to do the higher number. Is that a direction that staff should encourage applicants and we should encourage as well? I think that's the direction I'm looking for anyway.
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's right. I didn't realize that the BMR mix is less of a, less of an issue. So if we don't feel like there's any much ambiguity there, I'm fine not adding that. Yeah, I think so.
Yeah, and I think that's helpful, because that's why we sent forward both twenty-one and twenty-eight.
Right. But maybe in the future, we can just do twenty-eight.
Say twenty-eight, yeah, right. Mm-hmm. I, I kinda think, as I've said before, number five, I mean, we can bring it up, but we, we do a lot. I don't know if it matters.
I would like-
Fatalistic.
If we could have a timer, I mean, we're gonna have very limited time. It would be very good if staff could say, okay, we're gonna talk about this, three minutes for each of these bullets. And it's hard because everyone wants to talk.
Sure.
But we've gotta be able to get through this because we're not effective if we're not on the same page as council. That's the bottom line.
Yeah. And if we're gonna prioritize these, I would maybe move four to the end.
Okay. Make that five.
Do you wanna, do you wanna even keep it on this list?
Man, I don't think it's, even if we don't get to it because we don't have time, like, I think it would be, like, there's a lot of people that came from the public that wanted to, that spoke about this. And so even if they see it on the list and we don't get and have a discussion around it, it may not be bad to keep it on there.
So I'm not even sure that, I would like to ask my fellow commissioners, I think we're doing a really good job of giving information and recommendations to council. And it's kind of like dealing with teenagers. We can tell them what we think, they may not choose to follow it. But we, I think, have always been very clear about what is important to us. And I think we are equally clear as to why we make the recommendations we do. So I'm not sure that we can improve it. Whether it's received or not appropriately is not something we have any control over.
You're talking about number five?
Five.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying. I don't, I don't feel the need to talk about it. It is what it is.
I mean, when you read the minutes sometime, like, I just feel like there are things that get lost. Some of those discussions, like, the depth of those discussions don't necess, like, no one's gonna write ever, you know, all the details around.
Well, it's action minutes typically.
Correct.
But Mayras did a good job when he went to speak at council, because they asked for his feedback and he told them. But that's rare.
But maybe that is part of the process that can be improved, right? So.
I think that, there's a couple of things. I think one issue is the, a lot of number five, I think, deals with, at least what I've seen this year, is that a lot of it has to do with the conflict with the objective criteria. So if we're kind of following that and then the council either sees things that they can add to the objective criteria or take, take out things, then I think it becomes a sticky situation where we're following what we're given and they don't like, not with what we said, but they don't like the objective criteria. So like rooftop decks, I think that we're saying it's okay, but they don't like the rooftop deck aspect.
Nor do you.
Yeah, so, so I think the objective criteria is important to maybe get their feedback on and ask them, maybe we should look at changing some bigger things down, down the road. But I do agree that I think some comments, I think, get lost in terms of what's a comment and what's a condition. There's kind of something in between that, I think. Sometimes we say that we recommend something, but we don't make it a condition necessarily. So I don't know, maybe that needs like a bullet point list or something, but maybe that's too confusing.
I think John is pretty good about pointing out when we wanna make a condition, he says, did you wanna make this a condition or are we just recommending?
Yeah.
He's quite good about doing it.
Yeah, definitely. I think one, one was on 5150 that I remember, which was about the electric car, if every spot should have electric car spots. And I think we couldn't make it a condition, but I think we all kind of thought that there should be a good amount of electric cars. So I don't know what they're gonna say. I think that they're talking about that at the next meeting.
Yes.
Yeah, so I don't know what they'll end up deciding, but I don't know. It might be helpful to have maybe some things, if we think it's important, that's maybe more than a, just a comment.
So three levels. There's condition and then there's something else and then there's recommendation.
Maybe, 'cause, 'cause, I mean, I think that you made a good point, that sometimes we can't really condition everything, but sometimes I think we all feel strongly about something. So I don't know what's, it's kind of a weird in-between. But it might help with communication.
Well, does that fit with, tonight we gave direction, now that was a direction to the applicant, but we really don't, I mean, it's up to you to see whether that direction, we don't see that the loop is closed or not, you know, or we have no jurisdiction over whether the loop is closed or not. You do.
We, we do and we do follow through with that, but the way I kind of took the Planning Commission's action this evening is that you were recommending approval, but the approval is only recommended if the applicant complied with those suggestions that you provided to them. So I see them sort of tied together very tightly when it comes to City Council.
But it wasn't a condition that was written in there as in you must have a construction management.
Didn't have that.
Right.
And I don't know that the applicant would have been willing to agree to a condition at that level. So we might still have been sort of where you wound up this evening.
Is there an opportunity for them to challenge you on some of those conditions that we talked about?
Oh, yeah, they could definitely go to the City Council and say, you know, we've explored Miramonte Avenue and we just feel that there's not an opportunity to provide landscaping as suggested by Planning Commission. But then, you'd say, well, then Planning Commission recommendation sort of falls away.
Yeah.
But they can't necessarily challenge a condition.
No.
If we condition it, then that's, they can challenge it to City.
Well, Steve, well, our city attorney will have a few words on that.
Your, your mic. Little red light kind of comes on. I'm having trouble with this tonight. Yeah, they could. If you, if you recommended it with the condition and then they sought to oppose that, they could try to convince council to, to remove that condition. And if they convince council of that, they could-
Right, at City Council.
Right.
But not from, not here at this meeting.
But the condition has to have basis. You can't just nilly-willy say, I don't like it. You have to paint it green. There has to be some basis that's code-based in some way.
Correct. And that's why John makes the distinction that he does, I'm assuming, is that some things are suggestions that you think would make the project better and some things are conditions that would be directly linked with an impact that the project has. But if the applicant were able to convince the council that that condition wasn't really necessary, then council could remove it.
I mean, we're only a recommending body.
Exactly.
So.
Anyway.
Like, anyway, right?
Yeah.
So they don't have to go with our recommendation.
Correct.
But Steve, you were about to say something twice.
Go for it.
I don't wanna disagree with what's been said, but I would say if we have a recommendation for the, the resolution before the, the Planning Commission and they're recommending approval based on that resolution with condition, so you could be more strong in making specific condition changes. And then you could say, but the council should also consider other certain things. But I don't think it's a bad idea to, I, I've had this discussion with John before about, why don't we just put it in the conditions of approval? Because the, because we often have, no, I just put it away, but the first, the first condition is, the approval is based on the plans submitted on such, such date. And oftentimes with our single-family and, or I'll just say our single-family approvals or design review, we, we say with the following modifications to those plans. And if there's something that we wanna see with the building permits, but we can condition it, then we add those conditions at that for the approval. But I don't know, that's-
It's style. It's, it's actually-
Could be, but if it's in a- Could be, but if it's in a condition, there is no, if you, was that something that was approved that way or it's in the meeting minutes?
Yeah, I think that's where it gets gray, is like when we would say like, oh, we'd like to see a gate closing it off, like, we didn't make-
You're approving it with that, with that condition of that change, but-
Yeah, so sometimes-
But could that be a condition?
It should be.
Yeah.
Fundamentally, a condition is different from a suggestion.
Right, sure.
So what does it mean?
Well, so their choices, whether they want their garage secure or not.
I think it could be a condition so long as we were linking the condition to an impact and, you know, maybe you could say, we don't think that there's, that leaving that space open creates a safety issue, so we feel that closing it with a gate or some other type of enclosure would minimize or negate that.
Situation, I mean, that's based on safety, right?
Yeah.
We're probably getting a little far afield from just topics to-
So I think you did a great job on this list, I must say.
So this, this is good, just change the order there at the last two?
Yeah, we just switched four and five, I think.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any reports and comments?
Went to the last meeting. Okay.
We'll blame it on Roni.
Or David. No, I think he'd been recently, so maybe it was Roni. I went to, I think we probably all received the email for the urban plan for communities workshop a week and, a week ago or so, and so that was an interesting thing. I would encourage if that opportunity comes around, it would probably be very valuable for city council as well. Essentially, we used Legos to propose a redevelopment of eleven acres in a section of town, and we presented it to a play-acting city council for review. So that was good, and I-
Did you get approval?
Sort of.
With conditions?
With conditions and direction and suggestions. And Phoebe and I were both at the community center groundbreaking.
Yes.
And I was reporting that they're actually taking down trees right now, so.
I want them to take down the building. Every time I walk my dog, I wanna see something gone, and there's nothing gone.
Some trees are gone now.
That doesn't, that's not what makes me happy. I want that building down.
So that was the updates I had.
It was, it was a nice ceremony.
Potential future agenda items?
So the future agendas, you've got the city council meeting on October the twenty-second.
I'm the rep on that one.
Yep, Commissioner Brusick is going to be in attendance there.
You know, that would, excuse me for just a minute, I think that got shifted.
Oh, it did.
Everything got shifted down, and I swapped with David for one, but I think that Sally may have it.
I have it. It says, so what's the date on that?
Twenty-two.
Twenty-second, it says David. So did you swap?
But I swapped with him because I couldn't make a meeting earlier.
Okay. Oh, so you missed, you're the twenty-fourth? Okay, so you're actually October twenty-second because you flipped when you were away. So he did September tenth, that's right.
Yes.
Right.
But on that meeting, the upcoming, forgive me for, I just wanted to make sure we're all clear on that.
That's just fine. So you have the, or the city council has a C T zoning district discussion, they wanna evaluate that again. There is the project at fifty-one fifty El Camino Real that you've made a recommendation on, that will be considered by the city council that evening. Tangentially, there is the adoption of the twenty-twenty building codes, it's on the agenda for that evening. Those, if they're not adopted and put into place by the end of two thousand and nineteen, beginning twenty-twenty, January first, we would be subject to all of those building codes anyway. You have the joint meeting with the city council on November the fifth, that's gonna start at five-thirty, and we don't have an order yet in terms of which commissions will be meeting with the city council, you know, starting to the end. Then looking at your first meeting in November, which is on the seventh, you have a couple of study sessions. The first one is the one that was supposed to be held tonight at three four three Main Street, it's mixed-use development, where the, I think it was a lighting store used to be located on Main Street, the south side of Main Street. Then you have another study session for a project at forty-eight ninety-six El Camino Real, this is a mixed-use office and multifamily residential project. And then you have a project at four 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 fifty First Street, a new four-story, twenty-six-unit multifamily building project. Then that takes us to the city council meeting of November the twelfth, and Commissioner Meadows, you're in attendance on that one. We have a request or the amendment to the R three dash four point five, multiple families own district regulations will be coming back to council, made some modifications to that code in response to council direction. Then we have another story poll exception request for the project at forty-three fifty El Camino Real, that's at Los Altos Avenue and El Camino Real, the seventy-six gas station. They've come forward with a newer revised plan to provide some story polls at the site, so they'll be, council will be taking a look at that. The reach codes were bumped from the meeting on the twenty-second of October to the November twelfth meeting, and these are the codes for the electrification of new construction in Los Altos. That takes us close to the Thanksgiving holiday, the week before, November twenty-first is your second meeting in November, and you have two use permit applications. One is for a school on Orange Avenue within an existing church, and the other is for a veterinary clinic at the shopping center on Riverside Drive.
And you were, you were gonna check on whether we have a quorum or not on the twenty-first, I think.
Yes, I will send around an email and verify that.
Do we have any input, have we received any input as to what the changes were? I, I missed, I came back from vacation to determine that those poor people in that zoning still didn't have zoning.
That's correct.
Do we, do we have some modifications that will come before us again or no?
They will not.
No, they will not go to you, there was some council direction to make further modifications to the, to that district to address some of their concerns with, a lot of it was the, I'd say the, the relationship between the, the R one district and, and that R three four point five, so they wanted to limit the, the lots that were directly abetting the R one district to one story. They had some feedback on the floor area ratio and lot coverage, and also setbacks to the R one district.
So it was really the contiguous aspect that was the most troubling?
Yeah, I think that was, that was good, and, you know, there was, it was a long discussion, and Roni was there to give the planning commission's perspective, and the commission had some of their own concerns, and that was discussed here as well, differences of opinions.
I'm interested to see what happens when it comes back. Thank you for filling me in.
And that wraps up your horizon.
We got a long horizon, guys.
You do, you're gonna be busy.
Great.